First question is, what are a few of your major goals you plan on accomplishing as a council member?
Good question. I really want to improve the quality of our streets. When I was, when I was your age, we used to joke about being the pothole capital of the world. And we had, we had bumper stickers that said, save Petaluma potholes. But those days are over. We're done joking about that because it used to be that there were some potholes around, but now our roads are the worst in the entire Bay Area. And it's really creating a safety issue for pretty much everybody who's on our roads, whether you're walking, biking, motorcycling, driving a car, whatever it is. And so we absolutely need to repair our streets as a matter of public safety. So that's a really big one and it impacts everybody. It impacts, you know, senior citizens, young children, families, everybody. And, you know, if we don't, if a parent doesn't feel safe letting their child ride their bike to school, they're not going to do it. And then they drive and they add to the traffic, they add to the emissions, they make it unsafe for those kids that do walk or bike. So I really want to fix our streets and make that a priority. We also need to start building housing that people can afford. Affordable housing is pretty much for everybody. It's for carpenters, it's for florists, it's for teachers, it's, you know, it's about building housing that people can afford so that, you know, because if you have two, if there's two, one of two things that happen when you don't have enough affordable housing. One, people live outside of the city and they commute in to go to work. And when that happens, they add to traffic, emissions, and all those other things that we complain about. And, or they squish multiple families into one house. And then you get six cars parked in front of a house in the suburbs and that, that was only supposed to have two cars there. Well, that adds to traffic, it adds to the deterioration on our roads. So we really need to be building housing that people can afford. For me, I'm a, I worked in the clean energy industry for the last decade. I've got a background in city planning and so climate is something that screams to me. It's, it's what I wake up every day and do is, is, you know, work on solutions for climate change. And so I really would like to put Petaluma on the map as, as a climate leader. And helping to blaze the trail for all of Sonoma County, for the Bay Area, and ultimately the state and the country as to what cities can do to be climate leaders. And that goes to enacting policies, new projects, but also education. There's a lot of education that needs to happen to, to people in the community that climate isn't, isn't going to be an assault on your quality of life. It's going to enhance your quality of life. You know, it's like, what if climate change is not real? And we just have cleaner air and cleaner water and, and better, you know, local food and strong local economies. It's like, oh, all those things are really good. You know, and we just need to, and we create millions of jobs, you know, trying to fight climate change and it's not real, but we just created all these great paying jobs. And so I really, you know, those are three things that just jump out at me. And then the one that's really top of mind for everybody right now is COVID-19 and making sure that educators and families are supported. And then making sure that we're providing the highest level of support to help our local businesses survive through this and ultimately bounce back and be stronger for it.
Thank you. My second question is, how do these issues affect youth in our community? How would you, I guess, relate these major issues on like high school students and youth?
Yeah. Well, I mentioned affordable housing. Right now, if you are graduating high school and going to be going to the junior college and you want to work part-time, go to school, there's probably a zero percent chance that you could afford to have your own place. So for high school students who are graduating high school, focusing on affordable housing means that gives them a sense of independence. Focusing on safe streets means that you don't have to have a, you don't have to own a car and have that big cost. You can ride your bike and feel safe getting across town. So, you know, those are two things that I think for, for high school students in particular that they provide a sense of independence if we're doing them right. And I, you know, I remember when I was going through high school, I just, I couldn't wait to graduate and so I could get, you know, be on my own, you know, whatever it was. And I lived with my parents for two years after while I went to the junior college here. But it, you know, it was a sense of pride to be independent. And so I think those things certainly help. On the climate change front, you know, climate is, it's a youth issue. It's an everybody issue, but youth are the ones who are going to, going to be dealing with it. I'm the youngest candidate running for city council right now. I, you know, climate change is, is a life or death issue for me. It's, you know, it's going to impact my life. It already is impacting my life. It's going to impact my children and my grandchildren. And so, you know, in, in the education process and in taking climate leadership, there's going to be tremendous opportunities for, for high school students to get involved and to have employment opportunities and leadership opportunities within the community to be part of that education process, be part of the, the action process and, you know, really be driving it because people don't want to hear it from me. They want to hear it from, from, you know, there's a reason why millions of youth can, can capture attention and Greta can capture attention when, you know, scientists have been saying it forever, right? Scientists, Greta is not the first one to say that climate change is real. We've got to do something about it. She's just the, the young person who, who had enough and started a movement. And so, you know, one of the best things that as elected leaders we can do is empower the youth to really carry that torch. And, you know, I think that's an amazing opportunity to be creating.
So you mentioned the importance of youth taking leadership in climate change. But how, how would you say youth can take leadership in the other issues that Petaluma is dealing with right now?
Yeah, that's a good question. So one of the, the issues that I left on my website is safe routes to school. Okay. Typically, a safe routes to school program is, is largely focused on education and helping students understand where the, you know, what are the right ways to, to ride your bike on the street? What are the right, you know, this is how you'd use a crosswalk, this, you know, and then making parents feel like there's a safe route. Ultimately though, we need to change our streets and our streetscapes. And so some of these slow streets initiatives and things like that, I think there's a great opportunity for our Safe Routes to School program to start taking ownership of these slow streets initiatives and start coming up with streets that if we, if we close down this street to through traffic, it'll make it much safer for all these students to get from point A to point B. And the students can drive that. And when we need to propose something to the city council, the students can be there saying, look, if you guys pass this, we're going to have, you know, 50 students that ride their bike to school every day, where right now they're getting driven or they're driving themselves. And so I think there's a lot of opportunity for students to take ownership in the urban transformation from being primarily cars to being bicycles, walking, skating, things like that. You know, on the housing front, that's a bit different probably. It's, there's not a tremendous amount of, of youth opportunity in housing to be part of that, I don't think. With the exception of, you know, maybe some internship opportunities and things like that that we could create to help with, you know, implementing programs around new housing developments and things like that. But, you know, I, part of it too is, is, is reaching out into the high schools and, and hearing from them, what opportunities do they want us to create? Because there's, you know, a large number of people in our community are, are in fact, under 18 and they have almost no representation in our government. And so it's important for us as elected leaders to reach out to the, to that demographic and find out what are the opportunities that you want created for you? What future do you want to see happen? Because, you know, a bunch of senior citizens sitting on a city council making decisions that are going to impact a bunch of people who can't vote? You know, it's, it's just, you know, it's, there's no representation there. So how do we, you know, part of it too is just reaching out and finding out how can we increase representation among, you know, a group of people who don't have the, the legal right to vote right now? So, yeah.
Thank you very much. I think that concludes my question. Okay. So my first question is, what are your major goals you are planning to accomplish as a council member?
As a council member, well, basically you're one of seven votes on the council. And my, my, my philosophy of it is, it's not really what I want to accomplish. It's what can be accomplished and what the group is willing to accomplish. So one of the few reasons I, I'm actually running is, I, my family has lived in Petaluma for, I don't know, about 150 years. You know, right after the Civil War, I've lived here all my life. And currently, there is only one council member that actually grew up here. So I would like to add to that perspective if they're not reelected. It's Gabe Kearney. He grew up in Petaluma. Also, out of the seven candidates, there's only one east side representative, representative right now. And that is Kathy Miller. I also, I grew up on the west side. I went to Petaluma High School, which, which is the school you're from, correct? And I also live on the east side now, so it gives a little east side perspective. I also am a working family, family person. I have two kids and go to work every day. Most of the city council is either retired or self-employed, some are not. And I think right now, if I were to be elected, I would be the only one who has kids actually attending school. So it's just bringing a younger native east side perspective. So goals I would like to accomplish, definitely saving the fairgrounds for the future generations. The lease is up in 2023, which is in three years. And this council that's being elected now are going to be the ones making the decisions on what happens to the fair. Whether the city sells the property, restructures the property or leaves it how it is, I think there should be some local perspective on what we should do with that property. So, and the racetrack and, you know, other Petaluma issues, but mostly just perspective of, you know, most Petaluma folks are just working class, normal people. And I bring that perspective. So hopefully that wasn't too much rambling, Max.
It was great. Um, then my second question is that you mentioned how you were looking at the next generations. How do you think these issues kind of affect the youth in our community, specifically like high school students?
Oh man. Well, first of all, in 1996, I played football for the Petaluma Trojans and we beat Casa 57 to nothing. Just, just had to throw that in there. It had nothing to do with anything. But I graduated from Petaluma High in 97. And, you know, I don't know what the perspective of, you know, kids your age, high school students are, but we wanted to get out. We were like, there's, this town's dead. There's nothing to do here. And a lot of my friends left. Some came back and some are trying to get back, but they can't afford it. Because, you know, Petaluma is the hotspot now. You know, when we were growing up, everybody would be like, what's that smell? And I'm like, it's the smell of home. I don't know what you're talking about. But, uh, no, it's, the problem, people are under a lot of misconceptions on what the city council does or what can be done and what their actual power is. A lot of people ask me the question, am I for building? Building what? Housing. Do we have affordable housing? And it, you know, it's not a simple yes or no answer because the government hands down how many housing units we have to provide, building in the future. It's called the arena cycle. And so if they say you have to have 500 units built, Petaluma has to add 500 units to the city. And right now, we're, we're kind of running out of room, which most people have said to me. And you have two choices. Either you bump out the city limits to create more space or you infill, which means you kind of find little lots everywhere and you start putting houses and apartments and, 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 you know, shelter your, whatever to meet those numbers. So I've had a lot of people go, I'm not going to vote for you because you're for building. And it's like, no, that's nothing in my control. We get numbers and they have to be met. So, um, yeah, that's, I don't know, rambling once again. But yeah, it's, it's, it's something that I would like to educate people and tell them, you know, it's not really how it works because a lot of council members, you know, catch flak or people talk about it and say, oh, they're for building, you know, big apartments or, or whatever. And it's, it's, it's really not like that. It's, there's a person that owns a piece of land. There is a developer, whoever, who's going to build the actual, let's call it a house. And then the city council, the planning department approves it and then the city council approves it and then it gets built. So it's really not like the city council gets to sit there and look at a map of Petaluma and says, we're going to put an apartment building here. It's there. It's, you know, it's a, I guess, a team effort. And it's, there's a whole lot of aspects to that or pieces to that puzzle. So anyways, there we go. Next question. I think I answered that.
Um, yes. And here's my final question is, um, how do you see COVID-19 as affecting our community in the future? Again, kind of oriented to youth and high schoolers?
Oh, it must be, it's hard for me. I mean, I have two kids in school. One's in fourth grade, one's in fifth grade. And distance learning is terrible. I mean, I know you should probably feel the same way. You like to be with your friends. Just not sitting there stuck in your house, not be able to do anything. And, yeah, being on the computer, it's, I, I feel for you because I don't know if you're, you're familiar. I help out with the Petaluma High School Auto Shop in Mr. Benson's class every once in a while. And I haven't been able to do that. And we've been working very hard to get donations and new gear and everything to really help that program thrive. And the thing is, we worked really hard for months and then COVID hit and, you know, we're still, we're not able to actually get students in the classroom and have them work on stuff. So it's disappointing for me. I want to see you guys get back, but we can't be too hasty on it. Because we're still too, we're still unsure what this virus, you know, how dangerous is. And is it okay for you guys to go back to school without causing a big breakout? Because I don't want anything to happen to anybody. But, um, yeah, I mean, the economics, I mean, businesses are closing. People aren't making money. Money's tight. It's one of the reasons I ran this time to, because I'm one of those people who's struggling with money and finding work and, you know, everything's slowed down, slowed down and it's hard to, you know, start picking up momentum again. And that's one of the reasons why I decided not to accept donations. Because how could I ask, you know, another working family, hey, can I have some money for my campaign when they're worried about groceries? So if you're wondering, if you ever heard, you know, Robert Conklin, No Money 2020, it's because I'm going to see how far I can get with just social media, which is free, and reusing campaign signs from 2018. So it's a little social experiment, but, um, you know, if it's going to work, it's going to work in this town. Because Petaluma is a very unique place, you know? People, people know each other, people talk and best thing advertising is word of mouth. So for the, for you kids, I mean, you know, being on Zoom and, you know, this distance learning is kind of, you know, it might create some new opportunities to earn money and, and, and earn a living for yourself and, you know, make your way in life. But it's, we're going to definitely see a, a lot of change in the next couple of years. And just hopefully we can pull ourselves out of a, out of debt or, or pull us, or get the economy kicked up and running again. Because it's, um, it's going to be tough, but you know, I have faith in you guys. You know, I'm just here representing, you know, Trojans. Oh, wait, did I do that again? Cheap, cheap, cheap laughs there. But yeah, it's, it's going to be tougher. I mean, it's tough for me. It's going to be tough for you guys. And, but, you know, showing that it, we don't necessarily have to go into work to earn money or whatever. We might be doing a lot more commerce and making money over the internet. And which might open up a whole bunch of opportunities for students. So hopefully, you know, adapting to this, at least everybody knows how to do a Zoom meeting, right? Because up until then, I, I did my first one about two months ago and I've been doing them ever since. But, and I don't like them. I like meeting people in person, looking them in the eye, you know? And that's about it. Anything else? Want to talk about Petaluma? Am I rambling on too long?
Oh, it was great. Thank you so much.
Yes, no problem.
What are a few of your major goals you plan to accomplish as a council member?
Well, I've been doing this for quite a while. I've been on the council for 20 years now. And over those years, we've achieved a lot. I was kind of the point person for achieving the theater district downtown. That was about 18 years ago. And what you now see is the theater district, it's before your time, you wouldn't remember this. But it was a couple of the nastiest used car dealerships you could ever imagine. And so we were able to really transform that and make it a downtown for the entire community. So I'm very proud of that. We built a new wastewater treatment plant, environmentally friendly wastewater treatment plant that'll serve the community for another 70 years. That was actually rather contentious at the time because of cost issues, but it's turned out to be a fabulous resource. It allows us to create tertiary recycled wastewater, which we use for golf courses and vineyards and parks and playgrounds and Casa Grande High School, for that matter. The, and other schools as well. So going forward, I think the biggest challenge for the city is, is, is correcting our financial situation. And that's kind of boring stuff, but it, the budget is very important. And Petaluma is one of only three of the nine counties, nine cities, excuse me, in Sonoma County at this point that don't have a local sales tax to help bolster local revenues. And we have a measure on the ballot in November that's Measure U, which would create a, a local sales tax, which would fund a lot of things in the community that people really want and expect. Our downtown fire station is 80 years old. It's not seismically safe. We use it because we have to. We have an area ladder truck that's housed on the east side, even though it should be downtown because it wouldn't fit in the downtown station. We actually have plans for, and a site for the new station. It's a couple of doors from Pinky's Pizza, the vacant lot on the boulevard. So that's where our new fire station number one will go. The two fire stations on the east side are both, you know, 40 or 50 years old and in need of renovations. Our fire station, I mean, sorry, our police station is in need of a lot of work. And on and on down the line, even the historic museum, the old Carnegie Library downtown, it has this beautiful stained glass window up at the top, but that's not seismically safe. You wouldn't really want to be there, in there in an earthquake. So we have a long list of things we need to do. Our personnel has not recovered from the Great Recession of 12 years ago, even though the population has increased modestly since then. So there's a lot of good things that we could achieve with that tax. I'd, I'd say right sizing the city's budget is, is pretty high in the list. There's a huge push to have local steps to combat climate change. I'm totally in support of that. It's been difficult to work on climate change with a president of the United States who is pulling in the exact opposite direction. You know, hopefully that changes in January and people can be on the same page and pulling in the same direction. But irrespective of that, I, I know the community is very anxious to do what we can locally to, to combat climate change. Affordable housing or housing affordability is, is a huge issue, not just in Petaluma, but in the entire region, Sonoma County, the entire Bay Area, all of coastal California, quite frankly. And things have just gotten out of whack. Rents are crazy. And it, again, what you need there is, is, is really a lot of leadership at the state level and the regional level. But I'm, I'm fully prepared for Petaluma to, to do its fair share on creating more, more housing, particularly affordable housing. So that, that's a short list.
Then how do you think these issues affect the youth in our community, specifically high school students?
Well, climate change, your, your, your generation is going to be around a lot longer than my generation. So you're going to be dealing with the mess that if my generation can't turn the corner on it. Housing, I'm sure you know a lot of families with kids who grew up in Petaluma and the kids now live somewhere else. And partially that's, that's rent. Partially it's, Petaluma is a great place to, to raise a family, but if you're in your twenties and you're not married, it's, it's kind of boring. So, uh, so, you know, both of my kids are in their twenties and one's in Seattle and one's in Los Angeles. Will they ever move back here? I don't know. They could, but they're having a ball in those cities right now. But it's important for, for people graduating high school and graduating college and coming back to at least have the option of staying in the community they grew up in, if, if, if that's what they want to do.
And then my final question is, how can youth, I guess, take a stand and help make a difference of these issues?
So my second Zoom meeting of this afternoon will be of the Petaluma Youth Commission, of which I am the city council liaison these days. I, I think youth just need to make their voices heard. We do have a general plan process that will be kicking off here in the next several weeks. There will be a huge amount of public input over what this community is going to look like over the next 20 years and more. And, you know, I'd say young people should, there's going to be an advisory committee. I would love to see young people represented on that advisory committee. It, it's a big time commitment and it's more Zoom meetings, at least initially. It's probably going to go on for over a year. So hopefully the Zoom thing will go away at some point. But there are a lot of really tough interconnected issues that, that will shape how this community looks and feels going forward. So I would very much encourage high school students and youth to, to get involved in our, our new general plan update.
Okay. Well, um, thanks for having me on your program. And I would like to suggest to your listeners, for in-depth information about my background and my level of caring and service to the Petaluma community, people could visit my website, which is susankirks@petaluma.com. And there's a way to communicate with me via email or phone. I have a small Instagram account with just a few followers, but I've been doing quite a few posts that are accessible through the website. So people could learn a lot about what my perspective is, what my political views are, and just beyond today's interview, if you don't mind my giving that promotional beginning.
Of course.
Yeah, you asked me about, Yeah, you asked me about, um, areas, what are my, uh, some of my priorities? If I am fortunate to be elected to the city council and how they might impact, uh, youth, especially high school students? So is it okay if I just share with you what my, I was, I've been thinking about this because the questions are really good. So I could just share with you and will you interrupt me with questions if you have them?
Uh, yeah, you can go right ahead. And if I have any follow-up questions, I'll make sure to ask those.
Okay. Um, I was thinking about, uh, three particular areas for an elected official here in the city of Petaluma. Right now we are a city of about 62,000 people and we are going to be increasing over time in the next several years, probably to about 70,000. So Petaluma, the way that I live here and see it is a pretty special place. We're a mid-sized city, um, and we're the first city across the county line in Sonoma County. So we're really conveniently located in relationship to the greater Bay Area. I think that's one of our greatest advantages here for the future of Petaluma. And for the three areas that I was thinking I could mention, one is community safety. Uh, right now, uh, there's a, uh, quite a bit of emphasis nationally, internationally, and also here locally, uh, related to police activity and how people in our community feel safe. And I, I like to describe this as community safety rather than policing. And I think that our city needs to do an examination and a review of how our citizens feel, how safe we feel, um, what are our police practices? And at the same time, I think we also need new infrastructure for our, um, our community safety function and our fire, uh, department and our city hall. I think we need to upgrade the buildings and where people work in order for them to have a good working environment. That's a really important part of a person's life, just like if you go to school, which I understand now everybody's distance learning. But if students go to school, we need to provide, uh, really good quality, uh, infrastructure and buildings and facilities for our students. So, uh, that's a pretty major area that I think on the top of the list for most city council candidates. And I would favor an oversight commission to be sure that we're attracting really high-quality folks to be our community safety officers. That would require a ballot initiative. And so if there are any of your listeners who are 18 years old or going to be 18 and, and agree with me on that, that's something that, um, the students could vote for. And I think we need to add, uh, social workers and mental health professionals to our community safety staffing function. And the reason that I think this is important for high school students is I want you all to, oops, sorry, that's a message for me. I want you to feel safe in your community. I want all, all people of all ethnic backgrounds, um, all, uh, diverse, um, populations to be able to feel safe in our community. It's really important. And along with that, um, Max, we also really need to be attentive to, uh, emergency preparedness, which is why I mentioned the need for infrastructure, emergency responsiveness because of the climate change emergency or climate emergency we're in. I want your, you students, uh, you teenagers and young adults to live in a community that's going to be here. So for us, compared to say North, um, Sonoma County, where the wildfires are a little bit more of a, um, real true hazard. Uh, we have sea level rise, we have storm events, we do have fire danger areas. But our, our, um, climate emergency type of responsiveness needs to be more related to, uh, storm events and sea level rise, uh, drought, um, really high heat events, wind events. So that's another part of the whole community safety function. So that's one area. And, um, another area, hold on just a minute. Sorry.
You're done.
Oh, you know, a lot of the city council candidates are running now because we have some really big, um, events ahead of us for the future of Petaluma. And this will definitely impact, um, our youth and our high school students. And that is something called the general plan. We are getting ready to update what is the blueprint for the future of Petaluma for the next several years. And we're doing this in the context of, again, the climate emergency. Um, and I feel so responsible. It's another reason why I'm running for office. I have a very strong background in climate change experience, action, many relationships with conservation organizations, agencies and groups, uh, in our Bay Area and in the state, related to the actions we all need to take so that we'll have a planet for you all to be able to continue to live on. And I feel responsible because we've done this. We adults have done this. We are in this situation of a climate emergency, uh, and, and the young people are innocently in the middle of trying to live your lives. So as an elected official for the city of Petaluma, I believe that we need to accept responsibility and do the best planning that we can for housing, for more affordable housing. So, so if you want to come back and live here, if you go to college, uh, you'll be able to afford to do that. For, um, transportation and transit that's affordable, for people of all ages and backgrounds, and, um, for economic development. And, and that means, let's say you have an interest in going to college and then you want to come back to Petaluma or Sonoma County and work. I want us to be very creative and very visionary in attracting the types of businesses and, um, types of organizations and activities here in Petaluma that are very forward-thinking and that will relate to how we address the climate emergency. Uh, solar, uh, um, uh, fresh water, uh, uh, fresh, uh, our air quality. Um, all of the, the kinds of, um, jobs and careers that can be, are considered green jobs. That's where our future is. But at the same time, uh, for example, I'm not sure what your pathway is and I'd love to, to hear about it, uh, in terms of your own aspirations, uh, for higher education. We need, um, media. We need really good media people. Uh, we have a local radio station, and by the way, I'm appearing on it Friday, October 30th, 103.3 FM, KPCA, the program's Inside Petaluma, if anyone would like to tune in. Um, and we have a local, um, cable station. But we really could benefit from having lots of different media outlets and, and other types of modern, uh, job opportunities come to Petaluma. And like I said in the early part of our interview, we are geographically located in an ideal location for the Bay Area. So we, unlike, say, Hillsborough or Windsor, two communities I love, they're pretty far north in, uh, Sonoma County. We're right over the county line and we have an ability to interact with and attract and engage, um, many, many people, many opportunities in the Bay Area. And so the last area that I wanted to say would be a priority for me. Um, I've mentioned climate emergency and I'm guessing maybe you're tired of hearing that, but unfortunately it's the reality. Our environment. Uh, the way that I live in Petaluma, and it's another reason why I decided to run for city council, is, uh, ever since I've lived here, and I've been here for about 20 years, so I'm not like 40 years or 60 years, but I have lived in the context of environmental appreciation and understanding what grassland and hills habitat means. We have the river, which is a tidal slough, and we have our wetlands, which are extremely important. And I helped bring the Ramsar Wetland of International Importance designation to Petaluma, which is part, the northernmost part of the San Francisco Bay estuary. I worked on that for four years via my Audubon connections so that the city of Petaluma would receive that designation. Uh, we have some really wonderful natural features and natural resources, our wildlife, our birds. Uh, important to identify and preserve wildlife corridors. We need to elevate our thinking environmentally and equate that to every decision that the city council makes. So I would be the strongest person on the city council, if I'm fortunate to be elected, with environmental experience. And that includes environmental reviews and ensuring when we have development proposals, that, uh, our environment is protected, that we're not destroying our wetlands, that we're not negatively impacting other natural resources or destroying habitat. And this is all possible. It just takes, uh, visionary thinking, it takes collaboration, and it takes creativity. So the energy that I think that I would bring to the city council, I think, would also be helpful for our youth and high school students, uh, because I would be open to engaging, hearing ideas, um, interacting with our youth commission, which is the government way for interaction, uh, with young people for the city council and the city government. And also, you know, any type of interaction, for example, with you, with your radio program, so that we continue to have communication and we enhance our communication and we listen to each other and we get the best results for all of us in the city of Petaluma. That was kind of long, but is that, does that kind of address your questions?
It did. Thank you very much. And I do have one follow-up question, if that's okay.
Um, sure.
Um, you mentioned engaging, um, with the youth. And how can we, um, I guess, reach out and make a difference to some of these issues?
Well, um, that's a, that's a very responsible question. And I think that, um, some ways would be to become involved in organizations as members that have, um, priorities of, say, climate action or, um, helping our community. Uh, the two organizations that I can highly recommend are the Audubon Society. And, uh, we have many members here in, in, uh, Sonoma County and in Petaluma. Uh, so that's available and the, the membership fee is very reasonable. It's only $20 a year. So there are many opportunities to get involved in conservation projects, uh, and in appreciation, uh, just expressing appreciation and going to visit different areas in the county for bird and wildlife, uh, protection and identification. And the other organization that I lead, which is also available for supporting membership and is an action-oriented conservation organization, is the Paula Lane Action Network. We, uh, were founded here in Petaluma in 2000. And we are an action network with many relationships in the state of California. Uh, we have mutual support from organizations like Project Coyote. Uh, we're very strong into wildlife, uh, rescue and rehabilitation and, um, conservation for wildlife corridors and habitat. And of course, my own expertise is in the American Badger and everybody loves Badgers. And so it may seem a little odd that I'm running for a city government seat, but actually I believe that I'd be exactly the, the perfect candidate for government at our time because of the skills and the experience that I bring. So joining organizations, um, becoming involved in the youth commission, of course, if that's something that's of interest to Petaluma High School and Casa Grande High School, that's a way to interface with government. And, um, I think getting involved in national organizations as well that might have, uh, local or regional contacts. So if someone is listening and they say, well, I'm interested in so-and-so, where could I go? I'm happy to be a resource for that at any time. And, uh, people could reach me at Susan.Petaluma@gmail.com and I can give resources to you. Uh, coming together and being, uh, organized in groups on certain issues sometimes helps, um, achieve things for us here in, here in Petaluma.
Uh, well, thank you very much. That was great. Um, so my first question is, uh, what are a few of your major goals you plan to accomplish as a council member?
So a lot of it is continuation of things that I'm already doing. Um, obviously we want to keep fixing our roads. You know, we've, we've, uh, redone, uh, Sonoma Mountain Parkway. We've just, uh, finished redoing McDowell, or I'm sorry, Maria McDowell is, North McDowell is next, um, along with Petaluma Boulevard South. Um, so those are some major road projects that we have that are, that are either in process or, or recently completed or upcoming. So we want to keep with, keep up with that. We also are working on, um, road repairs on smaller, smaller streets. Um, and, and those are, those are ongoing. Um, one of the things that we're gonna be taking a look at coming up is, um, our climate commission has done a, a sort of a climate action plan and we're gonna start, um, going through that and talking about that. And so that's something that I certainly will, will be doing, um, if I'm, if I'm reelected. Um, and we'll get started on that before, um, before the end of the year. So I will, even if I'm not reelected, I will get started in that process. Um, we are, um, you know, and a lot of it depends, quite frankly, on whether Measure U passes, which is our local sales tax measure. If that passes, um, we will have some money to do some things that need to be done. We've got some capital improvement projects, particularly as it relates to our public safety, our firehouses in particular, um, that we would like to, to get done. There will be more road repair money if we're able to get that done. If not, we are gonna have to look at cutting staff and services, which, you know, we don't want to do. So a lot of what I am able to do in, in a next term is dependent on whether we have some additional revenue coming in. Um, you know, with respect to the city revenue, you know, out of our sales tax, which is currently 8.25%, only 1% comes back to Petaluma. The rest of it goes to the county and to schools and to the federal government. I mean, it's just, it's so, and we're one of only three cities in the county that don't have their own sales tax measure. Um, Windsor doesn't have one, Cloverdale doesn't have one, and, and we don't have one. Um, Windsor obviously doesn't have the infrastructure problems that we do because Windsor is, is a, basically a brand-new city. Um, so they don't have the aging roads and the aging sewer pipes and all of that kind of stuff that we have. Um, and then Cloverdale is tiny. So, you know, we're a full-service city. We have a police department, we have a fire department, we have public works, we have a, uh, water, you know, recycling and sewer plant. I mean, we're a full-service city and, and so to provide those services for people, we need additional revenue. It's just as simple as that. Um, so, and I kind of got off on a tangent there. I'm sorry. I was talking about finance stuff. Um, but that really does impact what we're able to do moving forward. I mean, it's just, it's just sort of the reality of what we deal with. You know, we are also, um, in the process of looking at some, um, police reforms and, and, you know, we, there were listening circles that were sponsored, centered around the Black Lives Matter movement. And we are planning a workshop to take in the results of those listening circles and see what modifications that we can make to address, you know, racism in, in, and not just in the police department, but in all of, all of the department, city departments. You know, we want to make sure that we're not, um, in inadvertently being racist or, or, you know, on purpose being racist. But, but those are things that we're looking at is bias training. You know, mental health professionals going out on some of these police calls that are clearly mental health calls rather than, than crime calls. Um, but, you know, the, the police have been the default for that and, and that's not, um, you know, they're not trained for that. And, and it's not, i- it's not fair to the person who's having a mental health crisis. And it's not fair to the police officer who's put in the position of trying to, trying to deal with that. Um, and then the other big thing going forward is we've just kicked off our general plan process, which is sort of how the city views things. And, and we have to, you know, we've got all of these categories that we have to plan for and they include things like, um, zoning and land use and social equity. And, um, you know, uh, the environment and climate. I mean, there's, there's a whole bunch of them and it's a lengthy process with a lot of community engagement. And so that is, is, you know, obviously a huge project that is, is on the city council's plate for, um, the next two to three years. That's a pretty, pretty significant, significant project. And then the other thing that's gonna be a focus, and, and we've done some of this and have to do more, but, um, getting affordable housing built. Um, you know, getting affordable housing built. Um, you know, we have they, they're called RENA numbers. And what that is, is a Regional Housing Needs Assessment number that we get from the state that tells us that we have to build a certain number of, of properties. And our number has almost tripled since the last RENA cycle. So we have to figure out a way to meet our RENA numbers and incorporate doing that into our general plan and the housing element of our general plan. So that's probably more information that you wanted to know, but that, that's kind of the difference of some, between somebody who's already on the council and has all of this sort of background and institutional knowledge and somebody who's, who's running for the first time who doesn't know. Um, you know, it's just not familiar with all of that stuff. So.
Um, and how do you see these issues affecting the youth in our community, specifically high school students?
So I, well, what I always say when I go and talk in the high schools and I, and I go and talk in the government classes at Casa Grande on a regular basis. Um, what I always say is that local government is the most important form of, of government because it has the most impact on your day-to-day life. So, you know, we do roads, we do parks and recreation, we do water and sewer, we do public safety. We do um, you know, capital improvement projects where, you know, we're replacing sewers and we're replacing water lines and we're, you know, I mean, we're doing all of that. And so it really has the most impact, local government has the most impact on the day-to-day quality of life of the people who live in the community. And that's true whether you're a teenager or you're eighty-five. Um, but specifically, I think with, with respect to teens, you know, obviously um, and we also do public transit. I keep forgetting about that, but we also do the buses. And I know, you know, I know a lot of the teens ride the buses or did when they were going to in-person school. Um, so I know transit is important to teens. I, you know, obviously the climate is very important to teens. And as you get out of high school and become a young adult, housing that you can afford in the community that you grew up in, if that's where you want to be, should be available. And I know, I mean, my son is twenty-four. He just moved to Santa Rosa because he couldn't get an apartment in Petaluma that he and his roommate could afford. But they got a, a nice big apartment up in Santa Rosa that, that is affordable for them. And so, you know, as a parent, you know, we want us, I, I want my kids to be able to live in the town that they grew up in and afford to live here if they want to live here. Now, you know, if one of them wants to go off to Chicago or someplace and live in a big city, that's fine, but I want them to have that option. And so I think that's, you know, it doesn't directly impact you as somebody who's living at home as a high school student. But it will soon, you know? And so that's something that, that is, I think, important as you're looking into what your future looks like. Um, but, you know, i- in terms of, of specific to teens, I think it's, it's it's similar to what it is to everybody else. It's really a quality of life. You know, how do I get around town? You know, I have are my parks in good shape? Is the trail that I like to ride my bike or go for a run on in good shape? Am I gonna do that without turning my ankle or, you know, getting a flat tire on my bike? Um, you know, if, i- if my house is burning down or, or somebody in my house is having a medical emergency, what's the fire response time? Are they getting there quickly? You know, it's, it's things like that. And, and like I said, it's, it's quality, it's everyday quality of life.
Then how can teenagers or youth, um, how can they get involved and make a change, make a difference um, to these issues?
So there are, I think there are a lot of ways that teens can get involved. You know, we have a youth commission. And people can, can fill out an application and, and serve on the youth commission. I've actually been the council liaison to the youth commission. And my son that I was talking about a little while ago was on the youth commission, you know, when he was in high school. Um, there are numerous um, nonprofits that you can get involved in that, you know, there's a nonprofit for anything that you might be interested in. Um, there are nonprofits relating to cleaning up the river. There are, there's rebuilding, which goes in and, and helps people redo their houses, usually seniors who, you know, are on a fixed income and they've got, you know, a roof leak or something like that. Um, there's Petaluma People's Services, which does Meals on Wheels, does Bounty. Uh, Petaluma Bounty, which is a food, uh, farm with a food giveaway program. Um, and, and all sorts of mental health services. There's Petaluma Educational Foundation. You know, there's, there are so many you know, there's COTS if you're interested in, in helping, helping with homeless issues. Um, so, you know, there are so many nonprofits that you can be involved in. And then the other thing that I would encourage people to do is come to city council meetings. You know, we'd love to hear from people that are younger people, you know, it, the reality of this, this position is that it skews towards older people. And the reason for that is because it's a volunteer position. You know, we get paid five dollars a meeting, so nobody is, is, this is not anybody's job. Um, and what it means is that if you're gonna be on the council and you're still in the workforce, um, you kind of have to have flexibility in your job to be able to do things like, you know, like I was working and I am able to shut off and do this, this interview with you and then I can go back and do some more work. Um, so you have to have flexibility in your job to do that. And as a result, our council is definitely skews older, you know? I mean, we have three people on the council who are either retired or semi-retired. And the ones that are semi-retired, those two, they work as consultants. And then we have what I characterize as the three middle-aged lawyers on the council, you know, which is me and Mike Healy and Dave King. And because we're lawyers, we can fix our schedules so that we can do this job. Um, and then we have Gabe Kearney, who is our youngest council member, and he's thirty-eight. And he, it's difficult for him sometimes because he does have a full-time job. He works for Cal OES, which means, you know, he has to be present during regular working hours. Whereas me, as, as long as I keep my clients happy, if I'm on my laptop from nine o'clock to eleven o'clock because I took a big chunk of time out in the middle of the day to do something council-related, that's totally fine. So, you know, the council skews older and, and more professional-type jobs because it's really the only way that you can manage both working full-time and, and this, this being on the council. Um, and so we don't get, um, we don't have a lot of diversity on our council. You know, Gabe is really the only one that, that is, is hitting any, any of our diversity buttons. Um, and um, you know, I, I would, I would like to see more of that, but you know, if you look at who's running, again, Gabe is the only one that is, is not just, you know, just a white person. I mean, you know, he's, he's Latino. And so we don't have, we don't have a lot of diverse people stepping up to run for council, which I think is unfortunate, but I also think it's the result of a lot of those factors that I was just talking about. Um, so all of that is kind of a, 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 a long-winded way of saying, if we don't have the diversity on the council, we do need to hear from, we need to hear from younger people, we need to hear from persons of color. Um, you know, we need to hear from those groups so that we understand, you know, what they think is important and, and, and why. And, and that way, our decisions are informed with that information. Um, so, you know, I think speaking up is really important because, you know, we want to do, we want to make decisions that are in the best interests of the majority of the people who live in this town. And what happens a lot is we'll hear from a really vocal minority group that doesn't like, and usually it's about some sort of a, a project, a development that they don't like because it's in their neighborhood or, or whatever. And they'll be super loud about it and show up at all the council meetings about it. And, and then they're outraged if we approve it. But what they don't seem to realize is that we've heard from other people who just haven't come down to the council meeting, but they've emailed us or called us or whatever, and they said, you know, we support this project. Um, and so, you know, that, I think, I would love to have more people regularly appear at council meetings who represent, you know, different viewpoints, because I think it's important to do that.
Okay, so, um, my first question is, uh, what are a few of your major goals, uh, you plan to accomplish as a council member?
Well, I think first and foremost, um, you know, the biggest thing for me is what I bring to the table. So I have a lot of goals and ideas and thoughts on what I want to do. But two things that I bring that aren't already on the council, nor do any of the candidates hold them are my background in design. So I've been working in architecture for over ten years. Um, and I hold an undergraduate degree in furniture design and woodworking and a master's degree in architecture. This next four years with the general plan update will be really big for Petaluma's future. And I think it's really important that uh, there is a designer's eye looking at what is going to be proposed and built and what the potentials for Petaluma could be. So that's what I bring to the table. I'm also a mom of two small children, one who is currently entering the pub, the Petaluma Public School System and one who is not yet old enough. So we're really just starting our career in the public school system. And I think that having that engagement uh, is really, really important in Petaluma. And, and nobody on the council has um, you know, children that are school age or that have gone to public schools. So.
And then what are, um, a few of the issues you see in Petaluma and that are ingrained in our community that you would like to fix as a council member?
Yeah, so there's a lot. And I think that when we're talking about, um, you know, social uh, and environmental justice, we have a lot of work to do. And I really think that that, those are the, the, the two main things that I will be thinking about with every decision I make, you know, with everything that comes to me on the council. Uh, I'm quite passionate about housing, transportation and economic development. And I think we have an extraordinary amount of potential, um, to really set ourselves up well for the future to come. But we absolutely need to be thinking about, uh, you know, all voices in Petaluma, especially ones that haven't been heard historically. And, uh, you know, making sure that we have affordable housing for folks that are working here, that are teaching here, that are going to school here, that are raising their children here, that are growing old here. Um, you know, as well as our current and, you know, um, ongoing climate crisis. So.
Then my last question is, how do you see these issues affecting the youth in our community, uh, specifically oriented around high school students?
Yeah, I mean, I really think that, you know, this is such a big time. There is a proposition, um, you know, on the ballot to be able to engage uh, our, our youth at, at an earlier age before they turn eighteen and can vote. And I think that's really important. I think that engaging our youth as early on and as consistently as possible will only benefit the city at large and make it stronger. Um, my community service and outreach work has started in the elementary school level of Petaluma. And I really think it's so incredibly important to be engaging with the children of our community, really starting, starting at that level, um, and then moving through the upper grades. Because I think that that's, that's where we're going to then in turn get more engagement back to us. Um, and I think that it's so important to have age diversity within a city. And that's spanning from our youth to the older folks in our community. I think it's problematic when we're really focusing on, you know, one specific age demographic more than the other. And again, I'll go back to, you know, being a mom of young children. And I feel like I'm really keyed in to, you know, the younger demographics of what, what the kids are up to. So.
And uh, how do you, can you see youth that aren't already involved get involved in local politics and I guess fixing some of these issues that you mentioned?
Yeah, I think that, you know, figuring out what is interesting to younger folks in our community and figuring out how to plug in and being given that opportunity to plug in. I um, I sat in on a few classes at CASA for, for one of the, the government uh, teachers. And it was really interesting. There were some kids that were really engaged with, with local politics and what is happening. Um, you know, and I could see if there's more interaction like that, then more and more kids would figure out what, where their interests are and how they could also plug in. Because it's really, you know, the city does so much spanning from, um, you know, parks and rec to transportation, to housing, to you know, kind of the commercial economic development status of things. Um, so there's really a lot, a lot to talk about. You know, whether you're interested in skateboarding or math or libraries and reading or, uh, you know, straight academics or mountain biking, you know, I feel like that there's ways to kind of filter into various, um, you know, be tapped into, to commissions and committees and to learn more. And to be present and show up for meetings would be really incredible.
Um, well, thank you so much. Those were